The January 11th, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be given by Eric Berger, Executive Director of Highway Aid Rescue Mission. Mr. Berger.
We'd like to share a verse as the prayer. Then Jesus said to his hosts, "When you give a luncheon or a dinner, do not invite your friends, your brothers or your sisters, or your relatives, or your rich neighbors. If you do, they may invite you back, and so you will be repaid. But when you give a banquet, invite the poor, the crippled, the lame, the blind, and you will be blessed. Although they cannot repay you, you will be repaid at the resurrection of the righteous." Luke 14:12. Lord, we thank you for opportunities to serve you through city, through church, as we include all in the community in what's available that you offer. In a nine name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Tonight, in employee recognition, I'm going to recognize Mike Brown. Mike Brown has served as the manager of the Water Supply and Water Purification Division since August 1st, 1983. His water supply has won the Texas Water United Association East Texas Regional Water Contest over 11 times and has been designated as the best in Texas winner by Texas Water Utilities Association five times during his tenure. In 1988, Mike's utility was awarded the Environmental Protection Agency Award of Excellence. In 2014, his water system was awarded the Outstanding Utility Award by the Texas Municipal Utility Association. In 2015, his water system was awarded the Outstanding Public Drinking Water System by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. Early in his career, he was recognized as TWUAs Young Man of the Year. Over the years, he has held various positions for the East Texas Chapter of Texas Water Utilities Association. He's also been recognized for his dedicated service by the TWUAs and has been considered the go-to person of the go-to public water supply by various state and municipal professionals in the water utility industry. When various municipalities and/or other water professionals have questions or concerns, they often contact Mike for his opinion and experience. He remains 100% committed to developing and delivering the best water, quality of water at a sufficient quantity to the City of Longview and six wholesale water customers. He expects his staff to do the same. Mike holds an Associate of Water and Wastewater Technology from Texas State Technical Institute and a Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences from UT Tyler. Also holds an A Surface Water Certification, C Wastewater Certification. Mr. Mike Brown. This, okay, this guy is so good at what he does, they asked him to quit applying the contest for the best water because he was skewing the results no one else could ever win. So, we really appreciate what you do for our community, Mike. It's, I know it's gotta be a labor of love for you to do it for this many years, but we appreciate your excellence, your expertise, and your dedication to our community. Thank you so much. What a privilege to have you on our staff. Thank you, sir. Mike Brown. This will be easy. CMF Austin State University Alumni Association, Neil McCoy, Angel Network, board president of Arts Through Children's Theater, Longview Ballet Theater, Longview Chamber of Commerce, Junior League of Longview, East Texas Treatment Center, co-founder of Legacy Longview, American Heart Association Go Red for Women Chair, Chair of the 2018 Go Giver Gala, and as of today, a star over Longview, Julie Bravati Woods. Come on up.
Wow, who's that?
That's the star.
I just want to tell you how special it is to be up here with this lady who has done so much in our community. Julie first came on my scene in 2015 when I was running for mayor and was an integral part of my campaign, has continued to help city staff and myself with the daily things that I do every day to be the mayor of the city, and I couldn't do it without her. And the things that she steps out and does above and beyond service to our community are just phenomenal. For those of you that attended the Go Giver Gala this weekend, it was absolutely an amazing success for a first-year event like this, and all because of the hard work that Julie and her staff and team put together. But it's a privilege to be here with you. You are such a wonderful testament to this community and all that you serve and the way you do it with such a wonderful heart. And as I said today in an earlier video, she has the tenacity of a pit bull, but the heart of an angel, and I really appreciate it. Love you so much.
I have one speaker card, Ms. Natalie Rabicoff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will be quick. First of all, I want to thank the two ladies that sit on City Council, because I had the honor of having my daughter in from Fort Worth for the WOW Museum Cooking Contest. And the ladies that are sitting with you, Kasia and Nona, were two of the judges, and it operated, Longview needs to know, my kids from Phoenix and Fort Worth were blown away with the beautiful museums they have and what's going on in downtown Longview, because they said they have beautiful ones, but they're not hands-on like this one was. And they were blown away, and it was one of the coolest things I had seen in a long time. Kevin Hawkins from Divine Catering was one of the judges, was one of the chefs, and Ronald Porter was the other chef, and they worked it just like Food Channel. Okay, I'm turning the page now. Mayor, I am here because I was so blown away when I was sitting a few months ago eating with Sean from the city, and then you walked with the star with her balloons telling me that I was going to be given this honor. I've always been told apples don't fall far from a tree, and when I moved here, your daddy was in everything, and he was one of my early, early mentors. He was at the football field and all those things, taking care of the athletes. He was hawking memberships like nobody else could for the chamber. And it was a generation of people ahead of me that taught me a lot of things, not forgetting what my grandparents and my mother taught me, because I'm a role model right after my mother, just like you are after your dad. But I knew you had it in your heart, because I know you love Longview as much as I do. But what you and Julie Woods and Julie's committee pulled together for this community, the people that were not there do not know what they missed, because I have had more people come up to me complimenting you and Julie and her committee and humbling me for the honor that y'all humbled me with. And I think it's only going to get bigger and better, and I came because you wouldn't tell me how much money you earned, because it was an amazing evening to see Longview. Longview's got heart. It's just an amazing thing. I don't know how anybody could live anywhere but Longview with the beauty and the hearts people have, because I grew up in Houston, and you don't see it in big cities. But I don't care what a person's financial basis are, they come to do something, and it may be mowing your grass, but they want to do something. We live in a very blessed community, and we're very blessed to have you as our mayor and to have Julie as a star. She's my little devil, angel.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Natalie.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Nice, kind words. I have no other speaker cards other than a zoning issue that we'll get to in a minute. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. Public safety update. Chief Bishop is sick tonight. We hope him a speedy recovery. Chief Stillman, it's all yours. You can cut him down all you want to tonight, buddy, he can't retaliate.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take up any of Chief Bishop's time. I went way over last time, so I'm gonna keep this one pretty brief. Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have happened in the fire department since our last meeting. Back on December the 21st, there it goes, back on December the 21st, we officially recognize the promotion of three of our employees, Corey Clanton to the position of captain, Doug Skinner to the position of battalion chief, and Ross Dyer to the position of captain within our fire department. So we want to again congratulate these men on this important step in their career and taking on more responsibility to help make our organization better. And this morning, we recognized the tenure mark of a few of our employees that hit some pretty important milestones in their pathway through the fire department and as employees for the city. And there between Mr. Bonds and I are Lieutenant Ryan Nicholson, who got his tenure award, Captain Kevin Fowle with 30 years of service, Captain Jeremy Gothard with 15 years of service, firefighter medic Chris McMillan with 10 years of service, and not pictured and able to be with us was Captain Ryan Howard, who also had 10 years of service. So congratulations to each one of them, and keep on going. And last, but certainly not least, and I'm gonna keep talking about this one, the Code Red Weather Service, the free service that the City of Longview provides to its citizens to register to get timely notification of approaching bad weather. As you know, wintertime is certainly, we've experienced several instances of severe weather in the wintertime. We usually think of it as being a spring and summer thing, but the weather will change on a dime, as it has today. So we certainly want our residents to take advantage of this so that they're informed about what's going on out there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Renate Consent Agenda, any items like to be pulled off for separate discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider application Z-17-08. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. Okay, this is a public hearing. An applicant is requesting to rezone approximately .7828 acres of Lot 6 and 7 located here on Row Avenue. The applicant does own the property adjacent to this, facing Judson Road, so he's just requesting to rezone the rest of his property from single-family 4 to general retail. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing. Is there any speaker cards that would like to be spoken? Counsel, any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, move to approve.
Very good. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, David. Public hearing held to consider application S-17-06. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a restaurant with a drive-through window in order to ensure no negative impact occurs on surrounding properties. Through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview's codes. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with city staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Counsel? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application PD-17-07. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located here at the corner of Airline and Skyline Drive from planned development, which is a PD-12-04. It was rezoned in 2012 for general retail without site plan approval. Now they're coming back with site plan approval for a bank. Currently, there is a house that remains on the lot. That structure will be demolished in order for the bank to be built. The bank will have four lanes, four drive-through lanes with an ATM lane. It'll be approximately 2,600 square feet in size. They are proposing, let me go back to the site plan, they are proposing one driveway off of Airline Road, and then they are proposing another driveway tying into the, sorry, if I could go back. They're proposing a driveway that will tie into the Raising Canes existing driveway. There will be a six-foot solid wood fence along Skyline Drive that's proposed that will match the rest of that development, along with landscaping, shrubbery along that right-of-way. Planning and zoning, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some concerns about traffic on Airline Road. We did talk to our traffic engineer. He did state that Airline Road between Loop 281 and Hollybrook Drive had a 24-hour count in 2015 that was 3,230 and a current capacity of 4,000 vehicles. At peak hour, he estimated there was about 325 vehicles, roughly 10% of the 24-hour count during peak hours, peak times. He did acknowledge that there were some minor delays in the peak hours. The current speed limit is 30, which was lowered in February 2017. Staff has recently discussed with tech staff the possibility of improving that intersection of Airline and Loop 281, which is limited in capacity due to Airline only having one lane in each direction on the south side of the loop. The signal is also a split-phase signal intersection, which adds to the queuing. We do believe that the intersection capacity could be approved, improved with additional lanes at that location, and the traffic engineer will be conducting a traffic analysis of that area to determine if, what the appropriate course of action should be. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff did recommend approval of this request, so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I have a speaker card, Mr. Asila Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I live at 416 Church Street, which I have to come out on Airline to go right or left to get away from my house. And one concern I have is, and the question I had, and she answered it, that the exit will come out onto Airline and not Skyline. If you travel that way, if I go right towards the loop, there's always congestion for cars coming out of Raising Kane, and the traffic light seems to only allow maybe five, maybe six cars at the most to get out on a green light to go right or left or straight. And often, there are people that will pull out of Canes onto Airline to make that left, and they block the traffic coming into Airline. It's very congested in that part of the road, and I see that it won't get any better with the bank traffic coming out there, too. It's just a big concern since I have to use that road, and a lot of times, I'll go left and cut across if I'm going, have to get my directions, I'm new to Longview. If I'm going on the loop towards Judson, I'll loop around rather than deal with that intersection. It's a problem to me that seems it's not going to get any better with this additional thing. I know it's been passed, but that's a concern, and you'll see me again. If I have an issue with the city that I now live in, I'm not afraid to come and share those concerns with the council. I think this is the place to come, not talk about it and complain about it later on. But I don't know if anything can be done. And the other problem with Airlines, since I've got the mic, that road is a disaster waiting to happen. I've had a few near head-ons with people crossing over the line. The road is crumbling on both sides. It's got a lot of big dumps and bumps in it, and I think every other truck around here pulls a trailer for some reason. And when they come along there, you know, they're not staying on that double-yellow line on their side. I've even had a few cars pass me on that road, because silly me, I'm doing 30 miles an hour, which is the speed limit. But I really can't see this getting any better, and anything that the city or whomever has jurisdiction over that road can do to help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, thank you very much. We're looking into that, and we will take your concerns into consideration as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to, as you said, the appropriate place to do this. Thank you so much. You have no speaker cards on this issue. Counsel, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Renate Action Items, considering ordinance calling a general election on May the 5th to fill expired terms for mayor, council members for councils just 1 and 2. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, Mr. Bonds. We're requesting an ordinance for the May 5th, 2018 general election to fill the expired terms for the mayor, council members, districts 1 and 2. The filing dates will be January 17th through February 16, 2018. Early voting will begin April 23rd and ends May 1. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on Ms. Shepherd? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll have an election. Thank you. Renate Action Ordinance designated a new early voting clerk for the February 3rd, 2018 special election called by ordinance number 4129. Ms. Shepherd.
Yes, sir. On November 9th, 2017, the Longview City Council enacted ordinance 4129 calling for a special election for February 3, 2018, to fill the unexpired term for council member District 3. The ordinance tonight is requesting that you name Angie Shepherd as the early voting clerk for this special election.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Renate Items of Coonty Interest, Mr. Moore.
I would like to invite everybody to my town hall meeting on Monday, February 5th at 7:00 PM in the Pine Tree ISD Community Room. We now have a shopping list of projects with preliminary cost estimates to further the implementation of our comprehensive plan, and I'm going to review those briefly and seek input as to priorities for the city as a whole, but primarily for projects for West Longview. Now, Mayor, Julie Woods, Sean, and city staff, Saturday night was fantastic, nothing short of fantastic, and thank everybody who put in so many hours to pull that off.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. Ms. Natalie.
I would like to echo what you just said, Councilman Moore. Ms. Julie, the dress, I'd like to borrow it. It was really nice. Also, guys, it's a new year, so let's make sure that we are praying for our city as well as each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Natalie. Ms. Williams.
Had a blast at the Go Giver Gala, and today, Stars of Longview's always a fantastic event. Congratulations again, Julie, and also your honor for the community. MLK is this weekend, and there are a lot of different activities that'll be going on. On Friday night tomorrow, there will be the Jazz Night, the concert featuring George Faber and friends. It's going to be at the Premier Event Center, 323 South High Street. It will have, there will also be local high school bands featured as well, $10 per person. On Saturday, we will have the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. The lineup will be at Ryder Drive and 259, I think, that's where we typically drive up, followed by a festival at Broughton Recreation Center from 11:30 until 3:00. On Sunday, the Ecumenical Service will be at First United Methodist Church, where Reverend J. Jackson is the pastor. The message will be brought by Bishop Robert Evans of Bethel Temple of Longview. And on Monday, the Table of Brotherhood Breakfast will be at 8:30 AM. This year, it's at Hyridge Church, 201 West Marshall, and then it will be followed by the march from Broughton to Mount Olive Baptist Church. The march will begin at 11:30, and then the Monday service at Mount Olive, where Reverend Palmer is the pastor, there will be the memorial service, and the speaker for that occasion is going to be Pastor Caleb Ray Coats. So take the time to go out and participate in at least one of our MLK activities. It's more than just a national holiday, but it's a time when we can really all come together as the quilt we are in our community and in our world to encourage peace, unity, and just to be together and continue to make our world a better place. So thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Ms. Ishhar is not here. Can we have a motion to excuse her, please?
I'd like to offer a motion to excuse Ms. Ishhar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Ishhar is excused. Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pertle.
I just want to reiterate what they've said about the Go Giver Gala. That was really cool. Ms. Woods, you were on the side, I mean, you know.
Very much so. Very much so.
You were kinda in the way, really.
Very much so.
Anyway, it was very nice.
I was totally in the necessary, as a matter of fact, Steve.
Yeah. It was very nice, and I think that that just shows what you've brought to Longview in the last three years, the unity and the enthusiasm that we have around here now. And you've been drawing that together. I hope you get another three after that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Steve. Mr. Bonds. Well, I want to first say, welcome to Mr. Bonds. This is his first meeting as our official city manager. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to many, many more with you, Mr. Bonds, and to Angie Shepherd for being here as our new city secretary, and to Candace Jones, who is also here as our new city manager's secretary. So we appreciate all of you all doing the things that you do and the ways that you serve our community. We thank you all very, very much for what you are. The Longstreet office will be closed Monday, January 16th in observation of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And as Kasia said, try to go out and make plans to attend some event in some form or fashion and show the unity that we do have in this community. Your sanitation collection will remain the same during the week of January the 15th. The library, of course, because those guys are like the most spot-on guys ever. The library's book sale will be held from January 11th to January 14th. During the regular library hours, you can purchase kids' books and paperbacks for 25 cents, and everything else is only a dollar. Partners in Prevention will be hosting Understanding the Struggle of Poverty workshop Tuesday, January 30th at 9:00 AM. For more information, go to www.longvetexas.gov/poverty. I didn't get the whole thing on that. Yeah, Ms. Shepherd. District 4 will host a town hall meeting in partnership with Longview ISD Tuesday, February 13th at 6:00 PM, Winterfield United Methodist Church. That'll be Ms. Ishhar. We have several upcoming events throughout the community. The Longview Museum of Fine Arts will kick off its 60th anniversary with the rediscovering Andy Warhol. The exhibit will be open January 16th to the 24th of March. Are you looking for something fresh or homemade? Artisans and Growers Market at Longview Mall will be held every Saturday through November and located at the J.C. Penney Court. For information on any of these events, please check out our calendar and visit www.longvetexas.com to learn more. Before we go into our survey, I want to take this moment to wish my daughter Spencer happy birthday today. Today is her birthday. She's my eldest daughter, and so I wish you happy birthday, sweetheart. I'll see you in a little while, hopefully. You can buy me dinner. That's not gonna happen. Survey, all about the Go Giver Gala. This is, this was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful event, put on by wonderful, wonderful, wonderful people, kind, caring hearts, hearts of service. Our city staff stepped up, our mod cop staff, those people, they just absolutely rock. They do so much, and they're so wonderful to be around, and they're such, they're so pleasant in what they do, you know? They sat there and helped us put tape on the bottom of a carpet to hold it down on the floor, you know? I mean, they just, it's just wonderful to see that enthusiasm that we have in this city workforce. I'm telling you, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of it. So it was Saturday night, which is the, which is the following, we'd like to see the funds raised, applied in order to best help people out of homelessness. We had four options. Work program, how about this, 78% want to see the work program continue to thrive, and I think that's wonderful. Modified park benches, only 1%, because that's not a big part of it. That's just a small part. Service fair, 6%. Police outreach services team, 15%, which means we have a lot to do, and we have a lot to do with it, and I'm excited about that, because I want to see all of these things were things that came from our homelessness task force and initiatives that we want to see put forth in order to help the individuals in our community, both those that are homeless and those that have businesses in town. We're here to help all sectors of our community, because we're all in this together, and I want to see that take place. I look forward to meeting with council to discuss how we will use these funds to better promote what we're trying to do here, and so I'm excited about that, and I'm excited to see that the city really came out and really stepped up. And you want to just know how much, I know Ms. Natalie has been dying to hear this number. How much money did you guess was raised in the Go Giver Gala to end homelessness? $100,000 to 149, 34%. $150,000 to 199, 35%. $200,000 to 249, 21%. $250,000 plus, 11%. I would take any one of those numbers and be thrilled to death, because in reality, when we first started this, our goal was to raise about $100,000, because I thought if we raised $100,000, I just think that that was a starting point, and where do you go? You know, you just say, okay, $100,000, we're good. But, because most events, if they raise that much money, they've done a phenomenal job in the fundraiser, a one-night, single fundraiser. Well, I'm so happy to say that we were over the $250,000 mark. Is that unbelievable? It really, it really just, it blew my mind, we were sitting there at the event after it was over, going through things, looking at what people, what people did and how they gave, and their hearts were just wonderful. And, you know, the really neat thing about this is it's one thing to put on a great event. event, it's another thing to put on a great event with the help of the community that we had, people who donated their, not only their time, which is so valuable, but their resources, because I don't know if there's ever been an event in Longview that had a less overhead than what this event had. Do you realize we have less than 10% overhead in this event? Less than 10%. That's a huge thing, because that means all that money saved, less than 10%, is going to be going towards our initiative, which is what we're after. So, you know, people that contributed, you know, from flowers to drinks to food, decorations, you name it, the community came out and they donated their time, they donated their dollars. And, you know, I can't tell you, Laura, Chief Stillman, Chief Bishop, city staff, y'all's auction items were so wonderful, and it was so nice to see us be able to give things like that from the city to our community and have people bid on them and be enthusiastic about bidding on them, because they're looking forward to doing those things, and I appreciate y'all's creativity. I know it was crazy when we came down, we said, let's do things that have never been done, give something away that we can auction off. Y'all's creativity blew my mind, and I'm so thankful to you all for doing that, because we raised a ton of money in the live auction, over $25,000 raised in the live auction, and then over $30,000 was raised with our envelope, the people just wrote checks or gave money at the event. So, you know, it's, our sponsors, I didn't, I can honestly say this, I did not make one phone call and I was turned down for a sponsorship for this event, not one phone call. Every single person I called gave us money for this event, and my thanks go out to you, because you are what makes this event successful. Our corporate partners, our citizens of this community, you stepped up, and when you step up, good things happen, and good things happen. And so I appreciate council's attendance and your support, your financial support. It means a lot that we sit up here together as unified council, doing things that are good for our community. It means a lot to me, and it means a lot to this community.